On the consent agenda, we have the West Data School District Athletic and Activity Return Plan. And I would ask to see if we can move that down to discussion and action, just to have a few questions asked. If that's okay.
Okay, we have a motion then to move item number two to discussion and action. Is there a second? Trustee Ozuna? Trustee Ozuna, seconds. Is there any discussion? Say none. All those in favor of making that change, please say aye.
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 Chairman is aye as well. So, item number two will now be discussion number three and action number three. Let's make that note. Are there any other changes or amendments from trustees?
Would it become an action item?
Saying none, then please, we... Then you can move to a motion. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Thank you very much. Trustee Johnson with that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Smiley with the second. Is there any discussion? Say none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Chairman is aye as well, so it's unanimous.
Aye, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Keep saying everyone's saying something. I beg your pardon. So that then brings us then, so it's unanimous. That then brings us into the discussion item, number one. This is the update to the reopening plan. And Mr. Heller will lead this discussion. So, Mr. Heller, you have the floor.
All right. Chairman Klaufenstein, trustees and Superintendent Ranells. First, I wanted to take some time and discuss a question that I've been receiving from some of the trustees. Regarding what class will look like in a yellow alternating day schedule or on a red remote schedule. And I want to start by saying, there's not a one-size-fits-all answer to this. Education regardless of the delivery model is not a paint-by-numbers situation. It's going to look different from class to class. As we always do. Classroom teachers, those professional educators and their professional learning community collaborative teams. Look at their instructional calendar, their priority standards, and they make instructional decisions based on the resources and tools they have at their disposal. Their focus continues to be on the priority standards and those proficiency scales. They utilize backwards planning. And their own professional experience and judgment to make instructional decisions. Our teachers will make decisions on which elements of their standards are going to be covered when students are in person versus which ones can be covered from home. And they also make decisions on what the appropriate instructional strategies will be used, whether it be in-person or at home. While one of our teachers may choose to focus more of their face-to-face learning time on more direct instruction components. Another teacher may choose to have students watch pre-recorded instructional videos from home. So that when they have the students come to class, they can engage them in different types of activities to deepen their learning. Our district curriculum and instruction team has developed instructional planning guides for yellow and red. Those are available on our district website under the COVID tab, and that's available for parents to review as well. These guides serve as our banks of the river for our teachers. They allow them to understand kind of the guide with which they need to work, but they also provide autonomy and their professional judgment to be applied as educators. At minimum, we have asked that there is some daily synchronous interaction and instruction in our classrooms. We've given guidance that at the elementary level, there should be at minimum, a morning meeting with students, both in-person and remote. For secondary teachers, we have asked that at minimum, at the beginning of each period, teachers and students have a remote check-in to start class. And also consider an end-of-the-period check-in as well. Also, the expectation is that anything that is synchronous or live be recorded. So that students who cannot get on during that live component from home will have the opportunity to get and watch that pre-recorded video at a different time. Our expectation is that students will complete the work that's assigned to them, whether they are here in face-to-face or whether they're at home working remotely. And that teachers will continue to collect work, provide feedback and give grades for those assignments. Our goal with all of this, whether we're in green, yellow or red, is to move our district to a more blended learning model. This matches up with another goal of ours, which is to get to more of a competency-based system of instruction. Where regardless of where a student is academically, they can move and accelerate their learning at a faster pace. Or they can, if necessary, slow down and take the appropriate measures they need to learn at the pace they need. Having a blended approach with the one-to-one devices and the work we're going to be doing this year is going to make our teachers better. And stronger as we're moving into that competency-based system. Now, as far as a bell schedule goes, we have given our elementary schools a general yellow and red bell schedule. But they are going to need to modify that, and they have modified that to match their special schedule. When is PE offered? When is health? Those sorts of things. At the middle school and high school level, we have just asked that they follow their building period-by-period bell schedule, both in yellow and in red. I want to also be really clear. This is not going to be perfect. It's going to be messy. We are asking teachers to do something in a different way than they've really ever been asked to teach before, you know, ever before. And so, we know it's going to be imperfect at times. We're asking teachers to take instructional risks, try a delivery model they've never used. And so, like always, we're going to evaluate what we do. Our principals do a great job of working with their teachers and seeing what's working, what's not. How do we make changes? So I just, I know that there's a lot of nervousness out there. I've seen some really great examples of what can be done. If our teacher PD that's happened the last four days, as teachers have been on contract, we're going to make all of those video PD sessions available to you as a board. So you can see the opportunities our teachers have had. And I think you'll see the opportunities we've been giving our teachers. And we've asked them, rather than focus on what we can't do, focus on what if we could. What if we could do things differently and what, because we are going to be asked to do things differently, but what if we could? Let's overcome some barriers, be creative as a PLC team to figure out how do we best instruct our students regardless of the scenario that we're in. So, I just wanted to add that piece in before I talk a little bit about the next step, which is tonight's discussion and action item. Where we are asking you as a board to consider the idea of bringing our preschool and kindergarten students back on a daily schedule every day. When we are in a yellow scenario. And so, for some background on that proposal, Tracy Garner, our Health Services Supervisor and myself, met with CDH. Seems like a week and a half, two weeks ago now, talking through this idea of K-5 students being able to attend daily in yellow. And the concept of this stems from data in the community, as well as around the world, in terms of virus transmission. In the age group of students from our K-5 population. And what's becoming pretty clear is that our younger school-age students don't contract the virus at the high rate that adults do. And when they do contract the virus, their symptoms are generally mild. And based on what we have seen in childcare centers and day camps, the students don't spread the virus to their peers and to other adults at the rate that adults do. The concept we proposed to Gina and CDH was that in yellow, we'd like to bring our K-5 students back into our building daily. And to do so, we would operate our individual grade-level classrooms as self-contained pods. To minimize intermingling of students from different classroom pods. We were very transparent with her that if we brought our K-5 students back on an everyday schedule. We would not be able to facilitate six feet of physical distancing within all of our West Data elementary classrooms. She understood that, but encouraged us to consider continuing forward with this idea. As long as we were able to keep students from the different classroom pods separated from each other. So if one first-grade classroom and another first-grade classroom, if we can keep those pods of kids from intermingling, that that would be sufficient. Now, that will require things like further staggering lunches, further staggering how we handle recess, how we handle special schedules. All of those things will have to be considered by our buildings in order to do that. But we do think it can be done, but there's definitely some work that would need to be happening in all of our buildings to go K-5. She also recommended that if we move forward with this K-5 plan, that we don't bring all K-5 students back at once. She recommended maybe a slow staggered release where we maybe start transitioning smaller grades at a time. And then eventually moving to all K-5 back in the building. So, we started today with this recommendation that you consider preschool and kindergarten. We surveyed our preschool and kindergarten teachers to gauge their comfort level with this idea. The survey was a zero-to-10 Likert scale with zero being very uncomfortable and 10 very comfortable. And so typically on an 11-point scale like this, the six-to-10 range would be the comfortable range of the survey. And the zero-to-four is the uncomfortable range, while five is neither comfortable nor uncomfortable, right in the middle. Our average preschool class size right now is five students, with our largest currently sitting at eight total students. Eighty-seven percent of our preschool teachers responded to the survey and the results were mixed. As you can see, 50% of the respondents answered within the six-to-10 comfortable range, while 30% in that zero-to-four range. Another 20% right in the middle at five. The weighted average score on the preschool survey was 6.55. When it comes to kindergarten, our average kindergarten class size is 15 students, with our largest currently sitting at 26 total students. In terms of the survey, we had 100% of the kindergarten teachers respond. Same question, same scale, and as you can see, 60, just under 69% of the teachers answered in the six-to-10 comfortable range. While just under 27% were in the zero-to-four uncomfortable range. And their weighted average score was 7.02. As with any survey we've done in terms of COVID and our reopening plan, this is just another piece of information for you to consider in making your decision. Thus far, we've not considered a scenario in which we would bring middle school or high school students back on an everyday schedule in yellow. And much of this is in nature, in relation to the size of our secondary buildings. And the fact that they transition between class periods every, in middle school at 45 minutes, in high school every 90 minutes. If the board approves the preschool and kindergarten proposal tonight, an option the board could consider. Is giving our superintendent the authority to continue to stagger and bring in more grade levels as we go through this process. So eventually bringing in first grade and second grade and et cetera. This would allow our buildings to slowly stagger in and allow them to change their plans, evaluate how it goes with kindergarten and preschool. Make any changes they need to make to their health and safety plans to accommodate larger class sizes and larger groups of students in the building. Ensure that their lunches can be staggered appropriately and all the other changes can be made. So, at this point, I will stand for any questions you may have.
Trustees, do you have any questions for Mr. Heller? Trustee Smiley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Heller. Several questions. Number one, the problem of attendance, you know, especially at the secondary level. You know, as I understand, the students have the ability to access the class later in the day. How would we register that attendance if they just logged in, especially if they logged in on some other device?
We can reconcile attendance. We have the ability within Teams. There's an analytics app that actually allows us to know when a student has logged in, how long they were on for any classroom team. So we will actually be able to identify which students have and have not logged on. So, if a student doesn't physically get on during the live session that might be happening, we can also check to see those who get on in a later time period. In the moment, in the live situation, a student who's not on, we are going to, we'll mark them absent. But then as we realize they did get on at a later point in that day, then we can go in and reconcile and change those absences. So Jonathan and that, and the Power School team are already working through all the logistics of how we can make sure that we accurately get the attendance for every student.
Yeah, because I also know that's asking the teacher to check those, you know, maybe the next day, maybe later, you know. And that's, that's one of those things I can tell you as a classroom teacher, that is problematic, because it's just that much more time I've got to do and backtrack.
Yeah, and I think, you know, Chairman, trustees, that that's true. It's going to be an extra piece that our teachers are going to have to take on. For us, it's pretty critical that we understand that every family is going to be in a different place in terms of their home situation. And if a student is not able to get on live during that moment, we want to provide them the opportunity to get on later. And we want to also make sure we count them appropriately present for making sure that they did that.
And, Mr. Chairman, could I ask you to go back to the red, yellow and green chart? When we start talking about in-person meetings, we did discuss this, you know, at a previous meeting. But I'm just wondering, will we still be allowed the opportunity to have one-on-one meetings with populations in the red category? You know, K-5 in general, even secondary in general, to have that ability to have some classroom meetings, maybe more limited than yellow. But I think it's important that we, we have some kind of an accessibility for face-to-face contact, even if it may not even be a full class.
Chairman, trustees, though, as is written in our plan currently in red, we can bring in small groups of students for either individual program need or individual student need. And those plans are already happening. If you happen to see the COVID-19 Task Force notes, CTE is already building their plans for how they can in red continue to bring in small groups as necessary. Special education is working forward on plans to do that as well for those students individually that need to be brought in to have whatever their learning needs might be.
And, Mr. Chairman, my final question, then I'll allow my other colleagues to join in. As we look at, you know, CDH recommendations, as we look at those, those other things. My understanding is, is that the district, and we can also designate the superintendent. We can, we can come up with our own plan. And they are not, you know, those recommendations are just that, recommendations. We can, we have the ability to override those recommendations, revise those recommendations, continue on with those recommendations. You know, so that we can, my attitude is so that we can get as many children back engaged in learning in class. And doing everything we can with those children as quickly as possible. I would anticipate that by September 14th, we should be able to start making that transition. Am I correct?
I'm sorry. This isn't a place to clap, please. And if you would please, anyone without a mask, if you please wear a mask. Thank you very much.
Chairman and trustees, so I will just say, trustee Smiley, that is absolutely correct. They are just recommendations from Central District Health. And the board has the ultimate authority to decide what our plan is going to be in terms of reopening.
Thank you.
And I just, if I can clarify, trustee Smiley, I believe we've passed, we've approved those?
Yes.
So if we don't approve those, if we change the guidelines, we probably would have to go back to a board vote for that. Because we've already voted on August 14th.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I agree.
Excellent, thank you very much.
I wanted to make sure that we got that out.
Understand. Any other trustees with questions? Trustee Ozuna?
Sir Chairman, thank you. I agree with allowing pre-K and kindergarten to be full class sizes when we open in yellow. I think that's great for them. I also would support giving our superintendent the authority to start staggering in grades one through five into the classroom. Because I think that's the best place for these kids to be. That said, I think that our safety plans really hinge on wearing a mask, washing hands and being distant. What I, what I want to clarify is that we passed a mandate last week for that, in addition to the CDH mandate. I'm asking for that to be part of the dress code, to give additional authority for our building administrators. To go ahead and make sure that that mandate is in place. Because if, in order to get our kids back to school, which is the ultimate goal of all of us. We need to make sure that those safety protocols are there, and we need to keep our staff and our students safe.
Chairman and trustees, and at this point, we would, you know, if there is a recommendation from the board in terms of anything regarding policy that we need to change. We would take any recommendations that you have, and we would be happy to bring something as early as next week to the meeting if necessary.
Thank you for that. I am very supportive of doing whatever it takes to get our kids back in the classroom safely. And in a way that will keep our staff safe as well.
As are we, yes.
Thank you.
Trustee, you.
Thank you.
Trustee Johnson, please.
If I can scoot up here. Maybe I can echo, I'm on the same page as trustee Smiley and trustee Ozuna. What I, I have a couple thoughts, so I'll, for that feedback, because I think you just asked. So, I, it is imperative that we keep the kids safe in the school. And one of the ways that we do that is everybody has to be part of the team that complies with that, everybody. That means parents, that means kids, that means teachers, that means everybody. So that means, just like we have on our door out here out front right now, face masks are required if you come in the building. They're also, we've already said that's part of the process. So, I think part of our policy has to be, it's required in our building. It's also required as an individual that we say we will do what we need to do to be back in our building safely, and we all join as part of the team doing that. So, those are the two I would suggest we look at for next week. The other piece of this is, and so let me say first, thank you for moving us forward down the direction. I think gradual is fine. Let's, we got to get started and we got to start somewhere. We also kind of have to reassess, right, as we go through the process. And so, my other ask, and it may be three or four weeks down the road, is that as we kind of move down this path. And we're all hinging right now on Central District Health, so let's hope that they do the right thing as well. But that we start, we come back and we reassess with our staff. How are they feeling? What, how are they feeling about the safety protocol management? How are they feeling about the classroom management? What do we need to adjust with? Same thing for our parents. Because as much as we have different voices being heard and sent to us, we have a lot of different voices coming at us. And they're in different categories. And it really is helpful for us as trustees to see where they are actually all at, because we're getting hit in different ways. Email, Facebook, the survey data. So, that survey data is really critical. And maybe being able to do that every couple, like four weeks or six weeks or whatever the timing you think is most appropriate. But just so we can reassess how folks are feeling about the learning modules we're in and where we're at moving forward is the other ask. But I appreciate you coming and doing all of this. Because I think it shows, even though we always knew it all along, that every, all of us wanted kids back in school. It shows that, that we're trying to figure out every way we can to do it. And I'm with you, it's going to be messy. I would ask parents to cut us some slack a little bit and let us figure it out. We will do it. But we've got to, we've got to work as a team, not against each other on it.
Chairman and trustees, I would also add that we talked a lot this morning about Central District Health. The metrics they are using and trying to be, have a transparent idea of what they're actually using to make their decisions. And we also started talking about that we need to maybe start identifying what our metrics need to be to, to...
So... I would greatly appreciate, please stop clapping. It's not fair to the people who have a different opinion. Would appreciate that. And ma'am, I would appreciate if you would wear a mask. No, ma'am, I'm sorry. This, right outside that door is a sign that says, everyone here needs to wear a mask. Ma'am, you can either attend to the police or you can ask. You know, I think the purpose of our meeting today, and I just want to be very clear, is we're all trying to get the best for our kids. We want them to be back in school. And the science that...
Don't engage. Don't engage.
My name is Clemson, the chairman of the school board.
What was the last name?
Ma'am?
Let's not engage. Let's stay focused on our agenda.
If you would, please. Thank you. Trustee Newhoff, do you have anything you'd like to add or any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not much. I'd like to echo sentiments from my colleagues about how we all have to get in this together. And, you know, take the steps that are going to be necessary to keep the kids in school. I do have one, you know, sort of question for Mr. Heller. Because I'm generally supportive of trying to get in and ease our way into having a situation where we can get the kids back in school, particularly the young ones initially. But, one of the things that kind of spooks me, and I, and I've seen this in some other jurisdictions, is the effects of quarantine. And what, you know, if a teacher is out for two weeks or a student is out for two weeks because of a mandatory quarantine. What are the plans for handling that in any of our scenarios?
Thank you, Chairman and trustees. So, is my mic on motion? Okay. So, we have talked a lot to our building principals and our principals have talked to their teachers. You know, if you think about a traditional school year, we often, a kid has to go out for, out sick for a few days. We just say, oh, we'll catch you up when you get back, right? That's always been kind of the way it's been done. That's not going to work if a student has to do a 14-day quarantine. So, we have talked that because we have one-to-one, because we are working through this blended learning approach. That there's no reason why that student, as long as they're well enough from home to continue to engage on their, on their device and work from home. That we can't continue to keep them engaged in the learning process. And so, we will work with those individual students from home if they have to quarantine to keep them on track as best as they can, given their situation. So, we do believe that we can, we can do that. It's a challenge that, I mean, as I said earlier, all of this is a challenge. It's a new challenge. But our teachers will rise to that challenge if given the opportunity. And I know that our teachers want to get our students back, even at least on every other day schedule, to get them in person as much as possible. So that they can get that instructional process going, get used to having kids back in the building and doing that. And I think once we do that, they will be able to bring those kids who are quarantining from home into the fold and keep them learning and keep them on track.
And I hope that's true, Mr. Heller. My biggest concern actually is the high schools, now that we've moved to the quarter. Because you're missing two weeks potentially of, a quarter of your, of your class. And hopefully we're got, I don't know how administratively we're going to, if a kid gets behind because of quarantine and the quarter's over. I assume there's going to be some sort of accommodation for them?
Absolutely. There will be accommodations for students who have to miss significant time due to a quarantine. We will make every accommodation to ensure that for those students. And that's something I have very confident that our buildings will do.
Okay, and what about the issue of a teacher that's out of the classroom for two weeks?
Chairman, trustees, certainly, I think we all are a little concerned in terms of the substitutes. And whether we're going to be able to adequately, you know, staff classrooms in those situations. Our subs are getting trained on how to use the same Microsoft tools that our teachers are being, being asked to use. We are, our digital integration team is currently working close to a subplacement to identify, how do we ensure that a student, a teacher that walks into a teacher's classroom has the, has all the tools at their disposal to connect the students and do what they, what they need to do. I also know that at the building level, those PLC collaboration teams are talking a lot about, if my cohort has to be out for a while. How do we as a team come together to make sure we're taking care of each other's kids and doing that? So, much like we do in everything else, our PLC teams help each other through this process. But subs is, is the unknown, and I think we all know, much like in the spring, bus drivers. If we don't have enough bus drivers to run the routes, if we don't have the teachers to teach the classes, those are real concerns. And when we talk about what's best for kids and what we want to do to help students. We also have to consider the fact that there is a staffing implication. And if we don't have the staff to do the job that we need them to do, then that becomes, that becomes an issue for us. And so, we are trying to put every, every possible plan in place. And we also know that every plan that we set, there's a really good chance that it goes off track. And we have to have second and third contingencies in place.
Miss...
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, trustee. Thank you very much, trustee Newhoff. Trustee Johnson, do you have any other question?
Actually, I don't have a question, but Brett, I want to, something came up that kind of popped into my mind as we start to talk about the dress code and the building requirements. A number of our neighboring school districts have dealt with that issue already around what's required in their building around face coverings. And I'm happy to work with you if you need, need it. But I think we need to model the similar policies, because I think we're, then we're consistent with where our neighboring school districts are at on that. Like Valley View would be the one that I can think of right now, so.
Yeah, typically, I believe, Chairman, trustees, that our region directors run that particular policy. So we may see which one of them wants to draw the short straw and be the one that gets to adopt and make those changes. But yeah, we will, we can certainly work with you on that.
Are there any other questions on this policy? Trustee Smiley?
Just saying, let me. My, my question, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Heller, concerns, you know, especially concerns staff. Because we've been getting a lot of feedback from staff. And the reactions are mixed, as you would expect. But especially for a lot of our staff that are mid-career professionals. I don't mean to stereotype, because I think that it really can't be. But, you know, just a general feeling of a little bit of uneasiness. And they would like to have some consistency. And, you know, so that we can plan. And that's, it's really hard, because we're literally, you know, as the recommendations are changing every... are changing every Monday, it, it's hard to keep up. But, you know, I, I wanted you to address the, the issues of staff in a little bit more detail, if, if you would. And then, I, I would also, yeah, I'll, I'll just let you answer that one.
Chairman and Trustees, I'll, I'll start by saying, in terms of certainty, I think everybody's looking for some certainty right now. And we're in probably the most uncertain times we've been in, and that's challenging. I also know that for staff, you know, they have been working outside of a traditional building with students and staff in it, really since March. Many of them were working from home, teaching from home, building those remote learning packets from home. And now they're coming back to a, to a situation where they're in a building. And pretty, next week, they're, well, soon, students will be coming back into those buildings. I think there's an uneasiness, but I also know that every teacher I talk to is excited for the opportunity to get students back in. And there is this, as you kinda get back into it, you get comfortable and you get more comfortable. And part of that's why this idea of even staggering in elementary over time is, it builds capacity for folks. I mean, there is a, there's a sense of fear in our community from at least a portion of, of folks. But I also hear from staff all the time that want their kids back. And so, much like our survey we've sent to parents, many are, bring them all back every day. And then, we have staff or parents that are saying the opposite. And we have the same with our staff. We have staff that are saying, "Bring them all back every day," and some that are saying, "Not quite ready for that yet." And so, those are just realities that we have to deal with. And our building principals, our HR directors, our region directors, they're working through those individual concerns and trying to make sure, how do we make people feel as comfortable as possible? I think the reality is, they're gonna be as comfortable as that building safety plan makes them feel. And if we are actually implementing the building safety plan at a high level, then they're gonna start to slowly build comfort. And I've even heard that from teachers over the first four or five days that they've been on contract, is they've slowly started feeling more comfortable, because it's just been a while since they've been in their traditional job. And they miss it, but there's also some nervousness and some unknown and uncertainty. So, I think it's, there's not a one-size-fits-all answer for that. It's gonna be, we're gonna work through every individual human that work, comes to our building. We're gonna have students walking into our school that have a level of anxiety. And we're gonna have to, we'll work on their social emotional health and how do we make sure that they're, they feel okay. We're also gonna have students that are gonna come in that have zero concerns about the, about the virus and, and we're gonna have to work with those students. And so, I think there is just a, a lot of unknown for everybody in this situation.
Give me another question, Trustee Smiley?
One, one other question, and it's on a little bit different of a topic. Also been getting a lot of, not a lot, but a number of feedback from both parents and staff that have concerns about how do they coordinate with daycare? And I do know that we have several of our buildings that are co-located with a daycare facility, either within very, very close walking distance or sometimes even on the school grounds, or at least district property.
I apologize, I don't mean to interject, but, you know, we are on this topic and we don't wanna be swing too far.
Well, that's, that's a question I would like to discuss later than, Mr. Chairman, with your permission.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'll leave it at there.
Thank you. Mr. Heller, I just had one question. So, you, you had mentioned about other standards that we would have. This policy, the reason I feel comfortable with it is 'cause it meets scientific standards. We would be having the same standards, is that correct? I mean, my understanding is, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, that we would be, children under 10 express a lot, they express less characteristics of the virus than children over 10. And that's why this policy actually makes scientific and solid sense. And we can actually bring it to teachers and feel comfortable that their health would be protected. Over 10, even through a K through 5 environment, might be more problematic. Is there a concern that you have that as we start going up this ladder of additional grades, that we would be going with older children that might express more adult-like virus symptoms?
Chairman and Trustees, I think our biggest concern at this point has been in the 6 through 12 grades, only because it's, becomes much more difficult to do any type of self-containing of a classroom pod, once you get into the secondary level where the students transition between class to class. You increase your, your, your fishing net, to use CDH's terms from a couple of weeks ago, and you're potentially having a wider exposure opportunity at those older grades. So, 5th grade is, clearly it's our largest in terms of class size. And so, I know that there are probably gonna be 5th grade teachers who will have some level of concern with just the number of students in their room and the ability to create some level of physical distancing. But, our focus has been K5. We have done a lot of research around the country, many, many districts are, have been bringing K5 students back on an everyday schedule and having some good success with it. The reality is, there is the opportunity in a pod, self-contained pod, that you might have an outbreak within a pod and you may have to shut that particular classroom down. And that's a reality that we may have to face. I think we want to have the opportunity to get started facing those challenges and getting students in school. And we have, I think, great plans in place. Our, our health services folks have great plans in place. Our buildings have plans in place that we believe we can execute and, and bring students back and get them learning in person as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. I totally appreciate it. And thank you very much for this presentation. That brings us then to the next item in discussion, which would be revised policy 501.5 on school, uh, school attendance zone. And this is the fourth reading. Ms. Jackson will be presenting this.
Chairman Koppenstein, Dr. Reynolds and Trustees, this is the, as you mentioned, the fourth reading of policy 904. And I will stand for questions.
Does any trustees have questions for Ms. Ch, for Ms. Jackson? Trustee Ozuna, please.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thanks for bringing this back in front of us again for a fourth reading. I appreciate that. The one thing, since this is a new policy and since this will be used this fall for a big boundary change for our district, I thought that it would make sense for us as a board to talk about the prioritization of the considerations that are in place, that are outlined for a boundary committee to work through. And just make sure that, as a board, that we agree on those priorities before we approve this policy, 'cause we have not talked about that as a group.
Troy, would you mind advancing one slide? Thank you very much. And I guess number one was optimal design. Is there a question from the board about the prioritization of these seven items? And we're talking about prioritization, not weight, is that correct, Trustee Ozuna?
I think that's correct. It's prioritization. And there's also some language in here that allows for flexibility within that, because, I mean, I, I don't think it's realistic to think that a boundary committee can really prioritize all of these exactly without giving consideration to specific circumstances.
Correct.
Excellent. Trustees, do you have any concerns? Trustee Newhoff, I'll lead with you. Do you have any concerns about the order of these? Now, you can't see it from where you are. I hope you're not driving.
Well, I, I, I previewed it. One could argue a whole bunch of ways on this. I don't have any great particular issues with it, so...
Excellent. Thank you very much, Trustee Newhoff. Trustee, do you have any concern about the order of these?
Mr. Chairman, I might, I don't have a concern with the order. I think the concern that I've had, and I've expressed it maybe a couple of times, but not as clear as maybe I will right now, which is, I think, most of them have some sort of measurable quality to them. So, walk zones are measurable, how many times a student moves are measurable, feeder schools are measurable. And we talk a little bit about the current and student and future enrollment down in, in item 7. When we talk about minimizing the number of students moved, though, we don't talk about what we're, what the criteria is for that. And so, is that current students or is that the future enrollment? So, that's probably the one that I, I, I think, and actually, our next boundary line change will have this challenge, which is minimizing the number of students moved may be the most politically expedient, but from a overall system management piece, it may not. And so, I guess if I were to say, "I think the order's fine," I'm concerned about that one, because it doesn't give good direction or, or measurable criteria for what that really means. So, that's the one I would strike if it were up to me.
I beg your pardon. What exactly are you saying you're gonna strike, if you had the choice?
I, I think we're gonna minimize or max, the language actually probably is fine in far, as far as should achieve reduced aroma and reduced overcrowding. But I don't know what we mean by minimizing the number of students moved. Is that for future enrollments or is that for current enrollments? Is, is the question. And we talk about that down lower, right? In the proposals, they should look at both. So, maybe those two could be combined, too. I don't know. Priority-wise, though, I think everything else is measurable and, and goes in the right order. You know, capacity of the building, safety of the student, what feeder schools are coming into them, whether or not they're in a walk zone, how many times a student is moving. I guess I'm saying, I think 3 and 7 kind of say the same thing, but they're not combined together.
Dr. Reynolds, if I could get a lifeline. For item number 3, what metrics are you looking at? What, what metrics would that committee have to understand that as an item of, of order?
Chairman Koppenstein, trustees, I really don't know a specific black and white answer. I think over time, we've had some parents, as, as we've been told in the past, where their students moved several times throughout their years in our schools. But I think the rule of thumb was always to try to keep it under 3. I don't know if that was just a ballpark number, but I know the last couple of times we've had attendance areas redrawn, that, that was a consideration. I don't know that it was the overall factor that determined where a line was drawn, but when you're an elementary school student, if you have to transition back and to different schools three, three or more times, it could have an impact on your socialization and your friendships. And I know when we look at elementary students transitioning to middle school, we try to look at the impact that has on neighborhoods and as students go to high school, if they can stay with their cohort, that usually is preferred. So, those things are considered, but I don't know that we always are successful.
But if I may ask, for as far as metrics go, we can get that through Power School? So, there is an actual number we can get?
So, I think, Mr. Chairman, what I'm saying on minimizing the number of students moved, the pol, the language says basically reducing enrollment and reducing overcrowding. I think Mr. or, sorry, Dr. Reynolds was speaking to number 6 and I was speaking to number 3. And maybe the metric is reduced enrollment and reduced overcrowding and our classroom sizes is the metric for that one. That may not be necessarily minimizing the number of students moved, it's actually maximizing the classroom capacity. So, maybe that's what we're, we're really shooting for, which I'm totally supportive. I, I think that, that's the ultimate goal, 'cause that's the statistics we have that say, when you can reduce the overcrowding in a classroom, the educational environment is better for learning.
Chairman and trustees, I think number 3, yeah, I think that sums it up. I think what it's saying is, we want to move the least amount of kids as possible, but we still wanna achieve that reduce enrollment and overcrowding issue. But we wanna do it by impacting the least amount of students.
So, I apologize, that, they impact one another in the process more often than we thought, at least the last, the last time we changed attendance areas, but...
My concern is, is that if we could reduce enrollment and reduce overcrowding, but it requires us to move more students and we have the capacity to do it, would this priority stop us from doing it? I, I think the language right now may, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Chairman and trustees, I think the language in here gives the committee the possibility we need.
Can you explain, kinda give me some more around why you think that?
Well, so, these are priorities, yes. But, again, there is flexibility within that. For some schools, some of these priorities are not as important as others for other schools. So, I think while these are obviously a policy, it's not something that we are tied to in an absolute fashion.
So, you're saying it's not a requirement? They, they don't have to meet all seven of these? You can meet some or all? So, it, it would vary, yeah? Based on the needs of that change? Trustee Ozuna?
Mr. Chairman, I know that, I've said this more than once, and Mr. Exline was probably tired of me suggesting that we put priorities around this. But I thought that that would give some guidance to the committees to use, so that from one committee to a next, the priorities of the considerations remain the same. But there do need to be special considerations for all of these things, and I think that's why Mr. Exline was always reluctant, or other people that have tried to prioritize were reluctant to put them in place. Maybe it makes sense for us to remove the language around priority and just list them as considerations that we had a couple of readings ago. You know, I'm not sure.
Are you proposing then that we remove the language regarding rank order, perhaps?
I, I'm okay with it either way, but if that makes you more comfortable. I, I think there are advantages for us to prioritize it. And I'm also okay if we don't, we leave that within a committee. But if we decide as a board to leave that up to the committee, we also have to know that from committee to committee, what they use as their priorities are gonna look different.
Yeah. I, I'm comfortable leaving the priority. I'd actually just think we just need to add some language on number 3 that says classroom size is the metric, or something that we reuse classroom or enrollment as the, I'd have to think, I can't think off the top of my head what the language would be, but something around that. 'Cause I, I just think it's titled wrong. I think we're trying to get capacity is, is our goal. And I appreciate and can support that goal and think that should be a high priority for us.
I actually think that's the goal of the policy, but I think the point of number 3 is really around minimizing how many kids are being impacted by any given boundary change.
Excellent. Are there any other trustee comments? Dr. Newhoff, do you have any other comments?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't.
Thank you very much. Excellent. So, we will move on. But thank you very much, Ms. Jackson. That brings us then to item number 3, which was item number 2 in the consent agenda. And that would be the West Dada District Athletic and Activity Return Plan. So, this plan, and Mr. War will, will help us through this, but this plan originally, the reason it was in the consent agenda originally, was basically if we go to item, page 11, thank, yeah, is that page 11? Yes. Page 11 in the fall opening plan? Would you have that, Troy? Oh, no, you're fine. I think the point of order with, or the, the point of importance that we had was the slide actually before. That might be good enough.
Oh, yes, it's page 10.
You have page 10?
Page 10, yeah.
Oh. You're fine.
It's on page 11.
I guess I have my copy.
It's okay.
Yeah, I'm looking for the IHSAA four bullet points. I don't think that's them. So, page 10 or page 11 of the fall plan? Is that possible to get to?
It should be on page 11. Athletics and extracurricular activities is the heading.
There we go.
That's it.
Excellent. Page 11. See, Trustee Smiley? Okay, so go to those, so it's four, those four items right there under IHSA. So, so the reason this is coming back and was in the consent agenda, is basically what we're doing tonight. We've already approved that we're going to adhere to IHSAA, that we're going to adhere to CDH, and we're going to adhere to the governor's reopening plan. So, based on those three plans, we've already, those three guidelines, excuse me, that we've already approved, then the point of, that IHSA asked us to do was to go back and just choose which areas of those plans that we're gonna make basically our athletic plan. So, we're not really creating anything new. We've already approved. What we're doing is, in essence, choosing what, what those items are out of those plans or out of those guidelines and then creating this actual plan. So, Mr. War, if you'd like, feel free to present. And if you would, just kinda show us where in the plan that we're pulling from the guidelines. And if you would, just kind of show us where in the plan that we're pulling from the guidelines.
Thank you, Chairman Klaufenstein, four members, Dr. Reynolds. Thank you for having me around. If you look at our fall plan that's been presented to you, we did address the question, and IHSA now looks to bring forward to you, what does our plan like fans, the program, which we've just kind of continued with the program that we had this summer, and now we're catapulting into the next stage. We're going to, can you schedule our kids to come to the event? I guess we'll do a little bit of it. It's going to give them an opportunity to...
To reap the rewards of the time and effort they put in, and in the manner that they've done. We address, you know, where we are in each stage, as we use the CDH guidance, as we use the rebound Idaho's guidance. And we also addressed how we would handle positive tests, and how we would handle the return-to-play platform for a student that, you know, possibly was exposed or dealt with COVID. So...
Troy, if you would, do you know what page, Jason, item number one is? For the fans and team attendance? I think we had, so family team attendance, transportation, I think it was two others. So if we could just go, just to reference which items are in the plan that, and then where, kind of where they are within the...
Are we going to go to the plan that I shared with you?
Yes, exactly.
That would probably be easier than this.
That's correct, excuse me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Troy.
Troy, can we go to the page before this? So if you look from a game management standpoint, we've used CDH guidelines, we've used the rebound plans, we've identified what we would do in a green stage, what we would do in a yellow stage, and what we would do in a red stage. For example, if this is approved tonight, in a red stage, we would bring two teams together. They could compete, but we would be restricted on who could attend. And then it adjusts through yellow and green. You know, our number one goal is to get our kids back on, either in the gym or on the field. And so this is our stepping stone. This is where we need to go. And so that's our first step. The second step that we cover is on, you know, our health and safety, which is on page three, which, you know, basically, we just took our health and safety plan as far as COVID-19 procedures. We adjusted them within this program. And how we'll come to decisions on if we have concerns within a school, within a program. And I should take that back. This is for athletic programs. This is separate from everything else. So we're going to take that as if we have an issue in a team with COVID, this is how we'll address it. If we have an athletic, whether it's one kid, sorry, this mask is not the best fitting. If we have one kid, how we handle it, if other kids are exposed, how we handle the team, how we would handle a school, and just how we would address it. Because that's what's going to happen. We're going to have to address this on a case-by-case scenario, school by school. And so we address it with this. If you move on, we also have our transportation plan that I think I skipped over, apologize. Oh, no, excuse me. We have our return-to-play guidance on page five, which, with the help of Central District Health, we have metrics or we have measures that we take into consideration in how we return. And we've been doing that all summer. We've been, if we had a kid that was exposed, or if we had a case, this is how we would handle it. It's been pretty straightforward. We've had great success with our health services. And now our nurses are back on contract, and it's working. And then on page, our transportation plan is, sorry, we got a little off. Sorry, our transportation goes on top of page three, and how we will transport. And we also opened up the idea, especially in our middle schools, that we have a plan for how parents can transport their kids to help alleviate buses and to address any concerns there. So if you look at our plan, we covered the IHSA requirements. This is just the overview of it. And then our schools have developed individual school plans to address some of the things that we've asked them to concern. Entrance and exits into facilities, procedures of how to handle restrooms, concessions, ticket-taking, how we space out in the stadium or in the gym. All those things have been taken into consideration as this plan has been put together. So hopefully that helps you, gives you an understanding of what we've, what processes have been gone through.
Thank you very much. Trustees, do you have any questions for Mr. War? Trustee Johnson?
And I may, maybe for Dr. Reynolds, but maybe for Mr. War. I'll just open it up. One of the questions I have, so first of all, let me say, plan is good, really good. I support it. I think you've done a nice job laying it all out for us. It's quality work. It's going to be a little bit of a bear to implement, I bet, when we get into yellow and some of those others, so appreciate your work here. I've been getting a lot of feedback, and so I want to understand the thinking. I support the thinking, and I also want to understand it. And also what the options are. So in red, right now, we're not able to, I think, from the Central District Health advice, allow parents into the stadium. So what are our options for parents to be able to see their kids play? And my other question is, is that for all sports? Or is there some sports where we think we will be able to allow, like a cross-country meet? Or some, so that's kind of my...
Trustee Johnson, or Chairman Klaufenstein, trustee Johnson, great question. We're just trying to get this started. Our goal is to get our kids out playing. We feel that this has been like everything we've dealt with in the last six months. We make a plan, and then we have to adjust to it. We have to add to it. So as we go forward, I would say in a week that we'll evaluate and say, what if we still are in red? It's our plan. It's our ability to make best decisions based on what we're on, where we're at. Honestly, this week, get our kids playing. Next week, let's evaluate where we're at. If we go yellow, great. If we don't, let's look at what works best. I understand that parents are like, man, I want to watch my kid, I want to be there. I've got a freshman and a senior playing sports, I want to be there. But I want my kids out there. That's my priority. So I'm going to go with that first, and then we'll evaluate next week. That's all we can do right now. This is going to be this way all year.
Thank you. My other question is, and because it's become very clear that even though we really need everybody's support to follow the safety protocols, we aren't always going to get that. And so what, just hypothetically, and you may, may need to answer this later for me, too. What's our kind of, how do we handle that, especially with a student athlete?
Trustee Johnson, Chairman Klaufenstein, we're in the business to educate kids. That's what we do every day. Yesterday, I had some stuff, people pointed out to me that we had some people around here, and they're like, man, that didn't look good, or it's up. We educate kids every day, so we're going to continue to educate kids. I've stopped by a couple of practices, and you don't know how many times I've heard people yell, get away from each other, don't stand doing it next to each other, go wash your hands. We will continue to educate them. Right now, we're not dealing with insubordination. They would jump through a wall to be able to play. And we'll continue to work on that process. I'm sure any parent that is here, they'll do what's necessary. Extracurricular is extra. It's a privilege to come out, and that's, they want it. Those kids who are outside, they want it. So I don't worry about us fighting the battle of, I don't want to do that. Right now, we're just dealing with, what do you want? I want to play. I want to be with my friends, I want to play.
Thanks, Mr. War. I have one last, and this is probably just a request, because I'm hopeful that we're going to get to yellow. I'm just going to keep hoping, because that's all I can control right now on it. But when we get there, it won't be just the kids, right? That we're going to have, now we're going to open up the stadiums. So there's a couple kind of requests, just to, one is, and I think probably the high school principals are already thinking about this, but that we handle that access somewhat similarly across our high schools so that we don't have a different access structure for who gets in the stadium in a yellow. Because I've had a few concerns about that. And the other is that compliance piece, right? It is a privilege. All of these things are additional to what we do, which means we want to be there. We got to follow what we need to do to do it. And so I'm supportive of whatever we need to do to make sure that we, compliance is part of the deal. We just have to be safe as we do all this.
Chairman Klaufenstein, trustee Johnson, we wholeheartedly agree. We feel, and I'll say it again, we feel that parents, players, the people that are part of the program, will do what's necessary. And, because the end result is, the emotional well, emotional, mental, social well-being of these kids is strengthened from doing extracurricular activities. That's why some people might say, why are we talking about athletics so much? It's just, it's one piece that helps kids succeed. And we've got music, we've got choir, we've got drama. I don't see concerns with us implementing stuff. Our schools have great programs, we have great leaders at our schools that will emphasize and implement plans to make it safe. And, you know, we will evaluate. Where we are today, I don't know where we'll be in three weeks. I'm hoping we're in a much better spot, that we can at least say, all right, let's take that next step. I don't know what that will look like. I would love to be able to let some kids in.
You can't predict the future, Jeff?
You know what, I wish I did, I'd be, have a little money.
We need to pay you more if you can.
I know. But we're preparing, we'll go forward. So in short, yes, we are going to implement good plans, protect our kids, protect the patrons that come in, create opportunity, and we'll adjust on the fly. We will.
Thank you.
All right, trustee Newhoff, did you have any questions?
I just want, wanted to follow up on what we discussed last week. Everyone wants to get back on the playing field. And I mean, I have a daughter who's a cheerleader, who really wants to be able to cheer her senior year, too. And there's one inconsistency in the plan that I'd like to understand how we're going to address, so that we understand what the criteria are. And that is, our stages of varying levels of getting back to some sort of athletic normalcy is related to rebound Idaho. And right now, our county is at a different stage than the state is for action of the CDH board. And if you do the crosswalk, that's in the document we've been discussing, I could foresee a situation where we get into yellow, hopefully, but let's say the CDH board decides to exercise an abundance of caution and keep us at level three. Which level of guidance are we going to follow there? I mean, I think we just need clarity there.
So Chairman Klaufenstein, trustee Newhoff, you're asking for clarity on, would we do stage four of the rebound plan? Or would we do yellow of the colors? Is that, or the categories, is that correct?
Well, no, what I'm saying is, if you do the crosswalk in that diagram, as I understand it, let's say we're in yellow, okay? CDH declares us in yellow, we're in yellow academically. But CDH keeps us at stage three in the rebound plan. So in the crosswalk, under yellow, we'd be in stage four. But if CDH kept us in stage three, which side of the guidance are we going to follow? I think we just need to say it.
Okay, trustee Newhoff, Chairman Klaufenstein, we'll follow the one that meets the needs of our kids. So if it's, if we're going to follow yellow, if it benefits, we're going to make decisions that are in the best interest. And I get that the two sides, it's like we have stages here, we have red and yellow. We tried to intermingle them. And to be frank, they couldn't intermingle them, and so then we have to be creative. We're going to use the one that best meets our needs, fits what we need to do, and puts our kids in a good situation. If I hadn't come to you before and said, we had success this summer, and I know people think, ah, they wasn't saying, we had success in our programs. Our kids had a great experience. We're taking the next, we've been protective of our kids. We put them in a good situation. So if we go to yellow and we stay in stage three, it works. We're good, we're going to let fans in. I don't know if we'll ever get to green, according to the metrics. If it does, we'll move to that step. So I believe it's, we can, we'll intermingle those two things. They don't fit together, they're just guides for us. But we can make decisions that are in the best interest of our kids, our programs, our schools. And we have some great leaders, they'll make sure we do it right.
Does that answer your question, trustee Newhoff?
Well, yeah, I guess there's not going to be, I mean, the answer is, is that we're going to go with the color. Right? Because that's going to get the kids playing sooner. That, I mean, which I'm not opposed to, but I'll just come out and say it.
Look, trustee Newhoff, you're probably right. The state started with the stages, the rebound stages, and then now we've gone to these color categories. So you're probably right, we will go to yellow. If the governor moves us, you know, into stage four, or we move out of the governor's plan, like we've been doing for however long, we'll have the freedom both ways. But right now, I would say the colors are going to guide us where we're at currently.
Okay, that's all I have.
If I could just kind of summarize, actually, so, Mr. War, you're saying that basically we evolved from June to now, and the rebound plan was more the plan of the day. And so you've been keeping with that, but the CDH guidance has come in play. And so it's more just trying to incorporate both, is what's happening now in September?
Trustee Klaufen, or Chairman Klaufenstein, that is correct.
Excellent, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, trustees? Seeing none, we will move on then to the action portion of the agenda. So item number one is the reopening plan. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Johnson?
I would move that we adopt the administration's recommended changes to the fall reopening plan.
Thank you very much for that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Trustee Ozuna with the second? Is there any discussion? Trustee Smiley?
Mr. Chairman, may I move an addition? To just, that the board also authorized the superintendent or designee to move additional classes or grade levels to a yellow category as warranted, beginning September 15.
I beg your pardon, would you mind, you have a computer in front of you. Would you mind writing that? Or actually, if you would, just give it to Troy, and then he can transcribe it, so we make sure we have...
Mr. Chairman, maybe I would just say, let's have a second motion on that, so we adopt the language, the proposal as is, and then add that additional language, if we could do it that way.
I would acquiesce to the ruling of the chair on that.
So you prefer not, the motion maker is really, it's up to the motion maker whether you accept a friendly amendment?
Just for giving time for clarity, it's probably just to keep moving. So, but I do have, I have a question, because I think what trustee Smiley's trying to do is allow the superintendent to add everyday instruction to the grade level.
I think that the expression of trying to stagger these things in and get kids back into class is something that I think is everyone's goal. And if there's a way of making that language a little clearer, I absolutely don't have pride of ownership into what I wrote down. But that's my ultimate goal, is that we do what we can to get kids back into classroom settings, you know, as the conditions warrant. I think that, I certainly don't want to end up, I guess it was a major university that just reopened everything all at once, and, you know, that week there were 1,200 cases, you know, the positive tests. And I don't think any of us want to do that. But, you know, as conditions warrant, and I think easing this thing in, working by grade levels, and I think that we start with the lowest levels, and then we authorize the superintendent to add grade levels as we can to that plan. That's my goal.
But I do understand your motion being that you're giving the authorization now, and that she would be... and that she would be at liberty to do whatever, adding it whenever she would like.
Yes, to the superintendent.
To the superintendent.
You know, and I, I, I think we do, I think we have to stay with, with what we have planned on September 8th. That's just practical. You can't, you can't move an entire district in just overnight. I think you have to have time to, to plan, and I think giving, giving a week like we're, you know, doing, I think, I think that's fair. That's why I put the word September 14th.
So we have, okay, so, so the motion maker has to accept the, uh, motion or, or accept the friendly amendment, or choose not to accept the friendly amendment? So that's your choice, basically?
Yeah, but moving us to a yellow category doesn't get us to every day. Moving us to a yellow category gets us to alternating days. So I think the language needs to...
Yes, I think, I agree, I agree, I agree. I, I'll stand corrected on that, yes.
I think that's, that's what I'm trying to clarify, is I think the intent and the language are, we need to fix the language to say, authorize the superintendent, or does it need to move additional classes?
Or grade levels. Or grade levels, yeah.
Let me read, let me just read it just for the record. So authorize the superintendent or designee to move additional classes on grade levels...
Or grade levels.
Or grade levels.
I would just say to move additional grade levels.
To move additional grade levels, so we'll take classes or out.
And we're moving them to full classroom size, right? Not alternating day, is what you're trying to do?
Uh, I, I'm very comfortable with the alternating days for now, yes.
If I may, I'm confused myself. So, so we're, so we're assuming we're in a red, this is only going to go in effect when we're in a yellow category. And what you're saying is that we're going to move additional grade levels to yellow, it's redundant, if I may say.
Troy, can I make a request? Because I think, I think I'm trying to get to where you need to go. Can you pull up our, the language that's in the plan, the red, yellow, and green language? I think there's some suggested language that says K, pre-K and, and kindergarten here, yeah, the underline language. So let, let's, because this is what you would want to add grade levels to.
Do you mean this language?
Yeah, she's, he's got it up there. So what we want to do is give the superintendent authority to add grade levels to attend school daily. That's the language used in our plan. That's what we would use, that would be the authority you would add. If, as it works. Is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah, I, what I'm, what I, Mr. Chairman, my intent is that I, I want to give the superintendent, you know, the authority to move us forward, so that we don't have to wait for a board meeting. We can ratify that action at the next board meeting, so we don't have to call weekly board meetings to add grade levels. I, I, I don't want to do that. That's, that's what I'm trying to do.
If I could just have Dr. Reynolds chime in?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chairman, trustees. So just to make sure I understand that you would like to have the superintendent have the authority to add more grade levels to all day, every day in K-5. The alternating schedule for secondary would, until we come up with some amazing schedule, so for now, it would be to add a grade level or to as conditions warrant, without having to come back to the board for that decision.
That, that would be my intent, Mr. Chairman, superintendent.
Was that it, trustee Johnson, was that what you were thinking?
Yeah. So if we go back to the language, because I'm trying to get us to the amendment I can accept, which I do agree with you, so, sorry, Troy. So we move, to move additional grade levels to all, what was, now I've forgotten. Yeah, no, you're good. I actually could pull it up right here. Just let me just pull it up. I'll tell you. To attend school daily is...
Yeah, attend school daily instead of all day.
So to move additional grade levels to attend school daily for grades K through 5. And I don't think we need any of the, well, when in yellow, I think is the last language we need, right? Because this is only for when we're in yellow. And then we don't have to worry about September 14th or not. You can take all the as warranted language out. And I would accept that amendment.
Okay, that, that's good. It, it takes several minds sometimes to get these things right.
So we have a friendly amendment going to, and I'd be honest with you, I feel very uncomfortable with this. The reason being is that, the reason that the original motion is being presented is that it was scientifically based. And we have a population, a large population of our teachers, who are really wanting us to follow the science. And the science may change, I don't know, but I think it doesn't require, it doesn't require the superintendent to have speed. It requires us to have oversight and, and frankly, an understanding of the science, to make sure that teachers are safe and that students are safe. And that's what the board's role is, is for oversight. The K, the pre-K and K, to me, is a logical step. It makes sense. We, we don't need to rush this. That's my two cents. Trustee Zuna?
Mr. Chairman, you know, one of the things that we've talked about is the science is pretty good up to age 10 or so, and I don't know where that falls, if that's fourth grade or third grade.
Fifth grade, 10, 11 for fifth grade. I have one.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. But one of the things, I don't think that our superintendent would move for this without making sure that, you know, we got input from our staff, that we know whether or not our safety protocols are working, that we're looking at our community spread. And I think the intention would be a slow, staggered rollout. But I also am supportive of weekly board meetings to make sure that we're meeting every single week to talk about what this looks like. What I don't want to do is have an every, twice a month meeting that would delay movement if the conditions warrant any kind of change to get anything going in the classroom.
Trustee Newhoff, did you have any comments?
Not really.
Yeah, I, I think, I appreciate your comments, trustee Zuna. Again, my feeling is, is absolutely, we want to, we want to increase our, our, our student levels. We just want to do it intelligently. And I think the board is easily able to move. We can, obviously, we're meeting again this week. We met last week, we'll meet again next week. We can do this. I, I don't see the rush. And I, we just don't want to go ahead of the science. We want to make sure CDH and others are with us, and that we're, not really adhering, but just listening to their advice, and making sure that we're not rushing too fast. We just want to make sure everyone's safe.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I can speak to why I accepted the friendly amendment. First of all, I read through the American, you sent, you sentenced the link, the American Academy of Pediatrics and all of the documentation that the district used to, to put together the proposal. And, and the proposal in this language followed and rolled it out exactly the way the, the American Academy of Pediatrics says, all the way through that age 10 or that fifth grade. They do address some different ways to look at 6 through 12. And so I agree with you, with, that this plan doesn't work the same for those age groups, and that's what the American Academy of Pediatrics has said. I also agree with trustee Ozuna that we've got to follow all those, we've got to follow those categories. So I'm comfortable with this language, with the understanding we're still probably not going to get out of weekly board meetings, and that the superintendent and the staff will update us on how it's going. I also haven't made this request yet, but I've seen Boise School District report their COVID numbers by their schools, and I checked with ISBA, and I think that'll help us get some good understanding of what's going on in our schools. So I was going to make that request later on. But I think we're, giving the authority is a good thing, because it allows us to have that flexibility, and we just need to make sure we follow up on it. And we've, we're also within the science standards that are out there right now around the American Academy of Pediatrics and the other, the other sources that we, that were looked at. But I appreciate the district proposing a gradual move to this, because I think that's really critical.
Yeah, and I, if I may, the other issue I do have is that it does appear like we're flip-flopping. And that's a, a bit difficult, I think, for parents who are trying to look for stability in our decisions. You know, last week, we, we chose for, you know, yellow for first through, first through 12, or yellow for alternating days for students. Now we're looking at increasing daily. And it was always our goal to increase daily. It just makes it more confusing to me. But anyway, that's my, that's my opinion. So any other questions or comments about this? Then we shall move for a vote. All those in favor of approving the...
Chairman?
The update on reopening plan?
Chairman? Chairman?
Point of order.
Point, point of order, please. Trustee Newhoff.
Do we need, do we need to vote on the friendly amendment?
Yes.
I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon. Okay, there I am, going off again. So the friendly amendment to add, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And nay for the chairman. That's four to one. So the, so that brings us then to the full motion. Is there any discussion on the full motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And it'd be nay for the chairman, and yes for trustee Newhoff. So it'd be four to one. That brings us then to item number two, revised policy 501. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Smiley.
I move revised policy 501.50.
Thank you very much for that motion. Trustee Smiley, is there a second? Trustee Ozuna with the second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, port of clarification, the new policy is now considered policy 904. Should we move for that policy number and not policy 501.50?
Excuse me, new policy 904.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the correction.
Thank you. Does we have a discussion or comments on this motion?
I did have just a discussion. I, I'm, I guess what I'm comfortable with is we get started and we see how it works, and maybe some requests for some follow-up. We're going to have a couple boundary committees, which I'm glad I don't have to be on. So we'll see how this works, and we'd appreciate some feedback.
Trustee Smiley?
The boundary committee reports always come before the board.
This is the attendance area.
The attendance area.
Yeah. Sorry, what I'm looking for is the feedback on how the prioritization worked as we see, as we see that going through, so.
Trustee Newhoff, do you have any comments?
No, I don't. Thank you, sir.
Excellent, thank you very much. Then we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And chairman's aye as well, it makes it unanimous. That then brings us to item number three, which would be revised West Datas School District Athletic Activity Return Plan. Is there a motion? Trustee Ozuna?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the West Datas School District Athletic and Activity Return Plan.
Thank you very much for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll, I'll give it to trustee Newhoff. Trustee Newhoff with the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And chairman's aye as well, thank you very much. That then brings us then to adjournment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Trustee Johnson with the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Ozuna with the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And chairman's aye as well, it makes it unanimous. Have a great night, and thank you. And thank you very much for joining us this evening. Thank you, truly.